Welcome, everybody. I'll call this meeting to order, the April 4th, 2023 annexation meeting. Pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Well, first thing on the agenda here is welcome and introductions and the board. Stand up.
We're getting our mics.
I'm Dick Polta, board member.
Paul Shonaker, chairman.
Dan Omen, supervisor.
Keisha Jones, treasurer.
David Snyder, attorney.
And then let's get these two.
Yeah. We have Rick Hansen here, he's our local state representative. Really appreciate him showing up. We have Shelley and Barry from Prairie Island. I don't know if you guys want to say a quick couple of words, just introduce yourselves.
My name is Barry Hand, I live in Newport. I'm a descendant of Hazen Moor. My nephew here, Cody Roan, is a descendant of Thomas Robertson. We're here with Shelley Buck, vice chairman of Prairie Island Indian Community, and Noel White, who's the tribal historic preservation officer of the Prairie Island Indian Community who are blood relatives to Great Cloud women. And so we stand here with Great Cloud Island citizens in unity to help protect your guys' community and the island that we have here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other state or local reps or anyone that? No? Okay.
Okay.
They're outside.
We'll move on to the overview.
If...
Yep.
Just as a housekeeping matter, I'd like to note that prior to this meeting, the town board met in executive session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13 D05 subdivision 3B, the attorney-client privilege exception to receive legal advice and to discuss legal options relative to matters before the town board. Present at that meeting were the town attorney, myself, Dave Snyder, the three town board members, Polta, Shonaker, and Omen. Also, planning commission chair, Eduardo Valencia, was present, as well as the town clerk. At the end of the meeting, they were joined by two video operators. Those were the parties present during the executive session, were required to make that announcement before we go into this open meeting, so I make it for the record. Thank you.
So with that overview, Dave, do you want to give a quick rundown of kind of the process? What we're looking at?
If I may, if it pleases the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The board, of course, sets the order and the process for its meeting. Based on some earlier discussions with the board members, it's my understanding that their preference is to not work off the fixed agenda as such, but instead, open the matter as a listening session for the board to hear from the community and other individuals, representatives, and stakeholders on the matter. And then the board will discuss it comprehensively with the entire community, with you present, and will be free to take questions, to the extent possible, to the extent those do not implicate certain legal issues. We're happy to have the board answer those questions. But I think it's the feeling of the board, and I can't speak for them, that their preference at this time is to have a comprehensive listening session to hear each of you ask questions, talk about issues of concerns, and maybe deal with those questions fully. I can keep a running list of questions so that we can get them all answered. So we'll take direction from the board at this point.
Why don't we have an overview so they all know where we're at and what's happening? Who put in for a petition? Who can approve it? Who can't approve it?
Be happy to.
If you close your screen, I'll put their petition up on the board. Okay. It's kind of hard to see, but I'll do this best I can. Wholesome has put in a request to annex 119 and a half acres of their property into Cottage Grove. And the way we understand it is, this is in Cottage Grove City Council and mayor's hands at this time. They're having a public hearing on April 19th, prior to their city council meeting, and they vote on it. And if they vote to accept this petition, then it goes in front of an administrative law judge, and that law judge pretty much has the authority to do whatever they want. So that's where we're at right now, and the reason for the meeting tonight is inform people what's going on, because a lot of them don't necessarily know what's happening or who's doing what. You want to add anything to that, Dave?
If I could, thank you. The petition that's on the screen in front of you is a petition for what's called annexation. Annexation is a process by which an incorporated city asserts its, expands its jurisdictional boundaries into neighboring townships, takes control of the township. There's a handful of methods laid out for annexation under the statute, and the statute in question, just for your notes or for your own consideration, is Minnesota Statute 414.033. That lists three, four, five different approaches to annexation. Those approaches include everything from annexation by agreement, to annexation in an orderly way, to annexation of small portions of an adjoining municipality under 120 acres. And it is that component of the annexation statute that's being asserted here. The mining company is seeking the approval to annex 119.5 acres, just under that 120-acre threshold of the township, right in the middle of the township. The statute also provides that that 120-acre annexation remedy right can only be pursued once every 12 months. It can't be taken, you know, month by month, but it can generally be understood to likely portend, or herald, or reflect a party's intention to continue in future years to acquire additional increments of the township. And in this case, as noted, we can look at the map, the 119.5 acres... It is not, there you see it highlighted in yellow, is not what you'd call immediately contiguous to Cottage Grove. It is a spit, if you will, a spit of land, a peninsula of land that goes north into the township and is not served largely or at all by Cottage Grove infrastructure resources or adjacent to it. It merely appears to be 119.5 acres that are alleged to be owned by the mining company that suit their apparent desire to compile 120 acres and approach somebody for annexation. And so it wouldn't, for example, follow lines that would be logically drawn if you were considering taking portions immediately next to you and urbanizing them. And so this is, as, just to repeat, a proposal to the Cottage Grove City Council for annexation of that peninsula of land running through the center of the township, presumably for the purpose of... Are there any aggregate representatives here tonight?
Patty. Patty's here.
I work for aggregate wholesome, but I'm not your representative. I'm president.
Okay. So...
No, you're not.
So they're not here, so we can't tell precisely what the intentions are, but it's fair to assume that the purpose of that is to permit, allow for, accelerate, or intensify mining in those areas. And we'll undoubtedly hear more from them as the petition goes forward. But on the 19th of April, Cottage Grove City Council will be presented with this petition. They'll be asked to make a decision, and they'll be asked to apply certain statutory factors, and it, the town board has the opportunity to respond. And so far as I know, they are planning on attending, the town board will plan on attending and stating their views on it, and it'll be for Cottage Grove to make the initial decision on this peninsula of annexation.
Dave, you have a question out there?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick one. What part of that statute where they can take 120 acres, are they basing this on? Because there's like three or four options there, and none of them seem to fit.
Subdivision 3, subdivision 2, sub-paragraph 3.
Right there. On the board. Can you make that? Yes. There you go. Good job.
And if anybody wants what we got on the screen, sent to them, because we had no idea we'd get this many people tonight, so Pam didn't want to waste a lot of paper, let the clerk, let...
Which one of them? Are they using all four of them, or are they just using one of them?
Subpart 3, the 120-acre method.
No, I know, but then under that, there's A, B, C, D.
So that actually reads different than what we have. That's not up to date. What I, I'll read you right from Minnesota statute. "The land abuts the municipality and the area to be annexed is 120 acres or less, and the area to be annexed does not presently serve by public wastewater facilities, or public wastewater facilities are not otherwise available. The municipality receives a petition for annexation from all property owners of the land, except as provided for by orderly annexation agreement. This clause may not be used to annex any property continuous to any property either simultaneously, proposed to be or previously annexed under this clause within the preceding 12 months. If the property is or has been owned at any point during that period by the same owners, an annexation would cumulatively exceed 120 acres."
So subdivision 3, that's not the statute, that's a resource manual from the Township Association. The statute, look at subdivision 3, but it's the 120-acre exception. So that...
So it says it has to either abut, or we can't provide the services, or it's like three or four things, and none of those fit this annexation clause.
I can't comment on the merits of it...
Can you roll back to the mat?
From a legal standpoint, but we'll certainly be testing every statutory requirement that's possible. So long and short of it, if I may, members of the town board, members of the public, and others assembled, that is the statutory authority that we understand them to be asserting it under. Cottage Grove City Council will make the initial decision about whether or not it makes sense to them to do something like that. And, you know, the town board will talk a little bit after hearing from you about what its intentions may be. And I'm happy to stand for questions either from the board or from the public.
Can I? Let's just scroll down for a minute, Dick. I just want to point out for reference.
Oh.
I'd like to make a little comment. Has the airline, American Airlines, for a long, long time? Anybody ever hear of Chicago here? It belongs to the city of Chicago. They have a 200-foot wide strip that runs about three miles that connects the airport to the city of Chicago. Seems a little bit just like this, because this is how they connect it, right there. That's all they need.
So just for, just for you guys as a reference, if I don't know, this would be Lower Island. This is considered Cottage Grove currently. So this annexation would abut this land, you would cross Moore's Lake.
That's not abutted.
Like we said, we can't say, position on merits of it. We understand what you're saying, but just pointing out.
Isn't the lake and the river federally owned?
I just reiterate, we're happy, at least from my standpoint, to answer questions about the process and some of those things, but this, I would respectfully suggest cannot be, in the interest of the township, cannot be the form in which we test, eliminate, correct, or disprove any of the particular claims that they are making. Those may have to wait for another day. And, you know, in truth, I think it would be the town board's view that they would hope that it, that day never has to come, because people reached the right decision on this for other reasons. But as to compliance with specific statutory standards, we're not in a position to comment right now and want to withhold that.
The big thing we want you people aware of is, as of right now, this is in Cottage Grove's mayor and city council's hands. We're pretty much powerless to do anything about it, I mean legally or whatever, other than contact them, and some of us have contacted, had some talks with them and that. They have the right to do this, and then, like Dave, the attorney said, it goes to administrative law judge. And I'd encourage people to read that Minnesota Statute 414, and you won't be totally happy with it. Question, where was the question? Yeah, go ahead.
We're joined here by Frankie Jackson, another one of our tribal historic preservation officers. And I just want to let the people of Great Cloud Island know is that when you're dealing with Prairie Island, you're dealing with a federally recognized tribe that is a treaty, 1837 treaty. Townships, cities, counties, states do not sign treaties. And so I would like maybe Frankie or Noah to explain to the town board about what they can do as far as assessing and surveying, even if it is private land, if there's burial bounds or remains, well-known in our oral history about Great Cloud Island, how that can slow this process down, especially when there's a jurisdictional change between township to city. So I don't know, Frankie or Noah wanted to talk about that with that?
Just briefly, one of the things that we will push for and ask for accountability and partnership with the state shippel office is doing a full assessment of known and recorded cultural resources in this area.
Can we get you guys to come up to the mic? Would that be possible? Seeing our agenda is kind of messed up anyway. You know, we really weren't going to totally follow it.
It has to go out the back door and...
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Yeah, feel free to come up and use the mic up here, then everybody can hear you.
Is that door unlocked?
Yep. Yep, it's unlocked.
Yeah.
Can you say your name?
Yes, my name is Frankie Jackson. Frankie Jackson. And I work for the tribal historic preservation office for the Prairie Island Indian Community. Forgive me, if I get a little winded speaking tonight. I'm going through some health issues, so I'll just try to speak a little slower here. As a representative of the tribal historic preservation office, we have always maintained an interest in the cultural resources associated with our tribe or our people, the dahupda. There are several features in this area that have always caused us to pause when we look at the land management practices taking place in this area.
Ah.
And so, moving forward, part of what we want to do is work with those agencies within the state that have that responsibility to protect and preserve what cultural resources we have remaining on this landscape. And so that will be part of our focus as we put together a methodology to identify known resources and unknown resources in this area. And so that will be a part that we will champion and that we will work with other state agencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You want to sit down? Do you want to sit down for a moment?
No. Okay. Thanks.
So I think before we get into hearing some comments, you know, I'll just say, as a supervisor, we're reading the same statutes you guys are, we're taking in the same information. We have a, we have a duty as, as our position to take in the facts, take in the opinions, read state law, assemble what we can, and get that stuff to the, you know, to Cottage Grove City Council. Like Dick said, we, we don't have a say. We don't get a voice on whether or not we find it merit or not merit. That's up to the Cottage Grove City Council. So as a representative of you guys, you know, I can tell you that I don't, you know, I stand with the position against it. I won't get into details on any of that stuff. I've been working with a lot of members of the community already. The biggest thing for, for me is to see everybody here show up tonight. I mean, that means the world, you know? April 19th is, is the date to let our voices, our little township, our voices be heard. And I think what we're finding out with that meeting, it's a lot like other public meetings, you'll probably have a three-minute time to talk, you probably got to sign up in the beginning. So I would really encourage, you know, don't just get up and wing something if you have something passionate to say or whatever it is, you know, write it down and, and think about it, because three minutes is going to, going to burn quick, and it's our, our chance to work on our island.
Will the township have everyone representing the township at the Cottage Grove meeting?
I know all three board members will be there. We all have full intent to be there. We have full intent to hopefully compile all the information we received tonight and get something to Cottage Grove City Council prior to the meeting, so it can hopefully be on their record to, to take our point of views, our different things in our discussion into, into consideration.
So do you have any idea what's behind their request for Cottage Grove to annex them?
Well, Cottage Grove has no choice but to act on it. Wholesome put in their request for annexation. Let me put this in. Cottage Grove didn't, as far as we know, didn't ask for the annexation.
Why did the company ask for it?
We'll let them answer that if they want. So, but back to where I started, so the company puts in for it, goes to Cottage Grove City Council on the nick, and say yes or no.
So real, real, real quick, I'll answer here, go. Real, real quick, and all we can do is we can just take what the petitioner states in the thing, and here's, here's what the petitioner says. "The reasons for requested annexation include: The existing township form of government is not adequate to protect public health, safety, and welfare of the communities surrounding this property because of shortage, shortage of staff and resources. Additionally, the annexation would be in the best interest of the subject property because the existing levels of government service, including water, sewer, fire protection, law enforcement, street repair, and land use approvals are inadequate for the property. Furthermore, given physical development, planning, intended land use, and the industrial nature of the property, Cottage Grove is much more capable of providing the services required by a property within a reasonable time. Lastly, this petition for annexation comes from the single property owner of all land to be annexed." That is the position of wholesome and their, and their states.
Again, if anybody wants these documents, email Pam, she'll email them to you.
I have a question about that. Well, Rick Miller's property isn't part of Eggs Bulcom's property, yet he's going to get annexed. I don't think this UTEC's land is part of that property. She's going to be annexed.
I...
A what?
No, they're not showing, no, they're not showing.
You got a question out there?
Question in the back.
Katie.
Katie.
So my question is, what they're saying about we cannot provide road service, and we can't provide fire department...
It'd be nice if you used the mic.
I thought I had a tough mouth.
We, we just...
Can we pass the mic around?
So, so...
We've, hang on, hang on, hang on. We've, we've encouraged for people to listen in that can't, couldn't make it tonight, so we want to make sure they can hear it, yeah. We can hear you.
We've been told, or they're telling us that we cannot accommodate them as far as keeping the roads clear, and maintenance, and fire department, and police department. Excuse me, all you got to do is look at the road after Geneva that Cottage Grove owns and never take care of. And our roads are beautiful, we have a wonderful snowplow guy that comes out and does a great job. We have police departments, fire departments that have done remarkable jobs throughout the years that I've been here, for 40 years. And it's like, how can they say that when it's not the truth?
So what? So what, so what I would say is, you know, for comments like that, you know, because we want to move this along quick, we hear you, we understand you, you know, we're not the ones that get to make the decision on that. Those are the types of things that we need to enforce to Cottage Grove to let them know, you know, how we feel about our roads, how we feel about our public safety, those types of things. We couldn't agree more. I, Washington County Sheriff's Office has done a great job, the county roads are well-maintained, so I, yep. We'll leave it at that. Any other?
Can anybody contact the Cottage Grove City Council and the mayor?
Yeah.
Okay, so you guys, contact Cottage Grove, and let's get our voices heard up there.
So if we're, and, and on that note, we're Great Cloud Island, let's represent us, you know, we're the, we're a big-hearted community, let's be respectful, responsible, you know, just, just, you know, represent us. We're all, we're all proud to be here, so.
Just a side note, Cottage Grove mayor, council, all their emails and phone numbers are on Cottage Grove's web, webpage. And being at some of their meetings, they've stated that they're open to questions and respond back to their emails and that, and I think they do, as far as I know.
Has, did the company ever come to the township prior to their request to Cottage Grove to annex them, saying, for example, gee, if you would do X, Y, Z, all would be well, but if not, we may ask to be annexed? In other words, do we have any idea what might satisfy them short of annexation?
No, they haven't.
As representatives, the, the petition, when we received this, it was complete, shocked us to receive it, so we had no inkling that something was coming or any of that stuff. There's never been discussion.
How did we receive this? Did it come from Cottage Grove?
Yep. Through state, that's how state standards, that's how they, maybe Dave wants to speak to that.
Their city administrator sent out notice to the township. Jennifer Levitt, her name is.
Do they have to make a decision that night of that April 19th meeting, or do they have time after that meeting?
We'll refer that to Dave, that we don't know.
They don't have to take action. Their options include allowing it that night, denying it that night, tabling it, or giving some other direction. Remember, it is less than a mon, well, it's a month old, leaving aside advanced communications that may or may not have occurred, but it is, it is, we've seen the petition now for a little over a month, and so they, they have options that don't include approving it that night.
So important for everyone to take action and email and call, do everything now?
And just so that, I mean, you guys are aware, not everyone shows up, so when we have a public hearing, and that's what Cottage Grove is having, we don't schedule that on those nights. We have it in a timely manner so we can hear, we can, you know, when we have issues, we get to hear what you guys have to say. Then we like to be able to have time to discuss on it, to... Then we like to be able to have time to discuss on it, differ on it, and then usually you would act on it at a later time. That's kind of how, you know, we handle things, whether they do it that way or not, we'll, we'll find out.
And like Dan said earlier, we encourage you to go up there, they have an open forum, but they usually limit it to three minutes per person. So if you do go, have your little spiel set free so you get out what you want. We do it a little different, we let people talk all night, but we usually don't have 45 people, but I feel that's what we're here for.
In the opinion of the board, does Cottage Grove have anything to benefit from receiving this property?
Yeah.
Do we? It'd be tax revenue.
Is that?
Like a lot of tax revenue?
Um.
Would they be swayed to say yes just for that reason alone?
I don't, yeah, I'll let Dave talk to that, it's.
Uh, I think it's fair to say that the town board is not presently, it has not presently been shared with the town board what has been offered to incentivize this or not.
To incentivize allowing it?
Correct.
Pass the mic down there.
To try to come and agree with. Hold on, let's get, wait for the mic. Have you had any discussions with the company to see if some other agreement could be reached?
Has who?
You or the board or council for the township had any conversations with the company to find out if there are other terms we can reach of terms of agreement short of annexation?
The company has not approached the township about its request for annexation before, during, or after the presentment of its petition. Among other things, the town board asked the company to discuss matters as basic and straightforward as continuing the town board's use of the town hall, they did that some months ago. And the company declined to answer or commit to the township whether that simple step would be afforded to the township in response to the township's request that it be permitted to continue to use the town board beyond, town hall beyond the time allowed for it. Under the agreements in which the town board agreed with the company to give it, to sell it to town hall and to move to a new location. So that's a long way of saying, uh, no, there's been no discussions and indeed no advance notification.
So for the tax too, just, just so, we receive about 30,000 a year in tonnage tax, that's what the island receives. If it were to go to Cottage Grove, it'd be up for, I, I don't know if there's a firm answer because we'd still have township, we have Gray Cloud, I don't know who would get that if it would get split, because currently Ember Grove, believe it or not, actually gets gravel tax because they border us from the river, so it's weird. So we don't know how that whole 30,000 would come into play. You take the, the land the way it's valued, it's, it's like four or $5,000 of property tax value for the land, just how it's, it's set up. So there's not a lot of tax money on, on the land.
I'm a Takliapi, Yuskiwanchiapie, Shelly Buck here. I am speaking as Shelly Buck, tribal member and descendant of Makpia Hotawee, Gray Cloud woman. Tribal council has given the permission to write a letter or letters as far as this is, this is concerned. We do have an interest in protecting what is there. Too many of our significant sites and burial mounts have already been destroyed by this, this company as well as other things throughout history around here, but there still are significant sites for us, and even though, I want people to understand that, just because a sacred site or burial mound has been destroyed and completely gone doesn't take away the significance of that site. That site is still sacred to our people, that site is still significant to our people. The spirit still lives there, the life force still lives there, and that significance is still there. So even though we have not built a relationship with this, the township per se, we are willing to help in this fight by writing letters, and I do encourage each and every one of you who oppose this to go to the meeting on the 19th, to write your letters, your emails, and make sure that whoever's not here today and who's not listening online, that you get them to do it as well. This is too important to our people. And I'm sure I'm related to some of you here through, through the history, but I do think it's so important that we all make sure our voices are said, even if you're a quiet person, I, write an email, you need help, let me know, I'll help you, it needs to be done, we need to protect this, and we can't continue to allow the destruction of, of sacred areas. Pidamayapi, thank you.
Thank you.
You said that Ember Grove Heights gets something from there?
Please, please use the mic, would you? Got way to people at home hear the questions too?
Just one quick comment that I wanted to add to a previous question about why the mine was potentially interested in this. So they have recently applied for a variance to township ordinances to reduce the setback where they could mine. By moving into Cottage Grove, Cottage Grove ordinance clearly allows them to mine within 100 feet of adjacent property. So that's probably their primary motivation, is they would no longer have to request any kind of variances to our ordinances to mine where they want to mine.
El Shut, I've been there 52 years, and I'm just wondering if it'd be a fair question to Cottage Grove if they've done any engineering studies or assessments, how they're gonna provide services, water and sewer, fire protection and road maintenance? If they accept this to fulfill the aggregate company's request of why they're doing this?
That'd be an excellent question for them on the 19th.
Thanks, Mike. So the 3MPFAS settlement did an extensive study on the geology and geography of the area, how water flows under this area.
Ray, are you using the mic? We can't hear you.
I am using the mic.
There you go, there.
So they did a pretty extensive study on the water in this area, and if you pull up, we have like appendage of the water sediment, it talks about all the financials, but trying, trying to bring not just, it just talks about bringing drinking water to this area, it doesn't talk about the sewage.
I said that rhetorically, the entirety of the year.
Yeah. But it has been looked at in a, that shows that it's not very feasible.
In fact, add on to what Ray said, when that PFAS study was done, we pushed Ray, Ray was on that committee, and we pushed Ray to try and get not necessarily sewer, but water down here, because it's cheaper to have city water than your own well, you all know. And that was turned down because they feel sewer water was never going to come down to this area.
In this case, it's worth it, it's cheaper. The cost to dig the mines, do the, the substrate under, that we all worry about, and if it wants to mine.
Yeah. Point being made is there's no plans to bring sewer water down this area, so.
Exactly, put Cottage Grove feet to the fires.
Yeah. Like I say, on the 19th, bring it up. Go ahead, there you go. Speak, speak straight into that like that. There you go, own it. Like chewing on a banana, there you go. There.
My question is, you asked, you said Ember Grove gets some of this money, gets the gravel tax from.
Correct.
Port, right?
Correct.
Would they have any interest if we asked them? I work for the city of Ember Grove, so my question is, would it be worth it to ask them to put in a word or something?
As far as we know, that gravel tax, all the gravel companies pay into, I don't know if it's a state fund, county fund or whatever, but it's dictated by the state where that money goes. And if a mining operation moves their product from their mine on a waterway, the communities on both sides of the waterway get the money, so they get, you could like, ask Mr. Hanson or him, so they get half the money. They, they'd get, they would probably get half from the other pit too, from the Nelson plant down there. So, yeah, so they, they're getting their money no matter what, whether Cottage Grove owns it, we own it.
So it's not gonna affect them?
No, uh-uh. Rick, you got anything you want to add or talk about tonight here?
Well, I, I had a couple of questions.
Reintroduce yourself so people realize they have their state representative come over to visit them.
Rick Hanson, I serve this area as your house member after redistricting, the lines all got changed, so I live in South St. Paul and proud to represent here now. So I have a couple of questions along the river, is this in the Minra corridor?
Yeah, the whole township is.
And is it in the critical area?
Yes, it is.
So has DNR been contacted about the critical area relating to the annexation?
That we don't know.
And then, is the area that they're proposing that they have annexed by Cottage Grove, is that zoned for mining now?
The, well, the area they're seeking to have mined in this 119 acres is pretty much mined out.
I don't know if, they, they have a bunch of different parcels, and I think some of the par, some of the parcels would not be in the commercial excavation overlay area. Uh, some of them are.
The question comes back to the critical area and the corridor, so if it's changing a use, but it's changing the jurisdiction, which I think then needs to go back to DNR, which may provide some additional time as well as, I think the tribal representation is really important, but I think there's probably a DNR role here as well. And then a county role, any, any county role in this at all?
Yep.
Uh, the property butts a county road, so it would be a kind of a jurisdictional mix as to, in fact, with the county is, county keeps wanting us to take that road over and not have them do it. So now they would have two landowners on the same county road.
And then a final question, and I realize this may be very sensitive, but in Dakota County, Empire Township has now become the city of Empire, so if Gray Cloud Island Township became a city, would that prevent annexation by another city?
I'll let Dave answer that. As far as I know, no, they do it a different way. You want to speak on that, Dave? I've called it, or Dave told us before, then it's a detachment annexation, you detach from one city and go to another city. That was brought up under previous annexations we had down here.
To answer your question, it could slow it, but it is an uphill battle for a township like Gray Cloud, for example, in the metro area to do that.
Just checking.
To your, to your questions, regardless of, and those are important questions, regardless of the zoning status of the subject parcels, I think it is obvious from the mining standpoint that they only, that they do this incrementally. If it's this, these parcels now, it's fair to assume that it'll be other parcels.
It's leapfrog.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What is subject? You said subject mining? Subject? Subject, you just never mind. Watch the tape.
Yes. Let us know.
I'm gonna follow up on that, so is it gonna be April 4th, 2024, and we're gonna be right back here again on the next 120 acres? Or should we be proactive and maybe take, talk to St. Paul Park or somebody else? Because I'd rather belong to St. Paul Park than Cottage Grove any day of the week. Because if we're gonna lose our autonomy, I don't want to go to Cottage Grove, because I've lived here all my life, and I know how that's gonna turn out. It's not gonna be good for anybody in this room.
I agree.
As a, I'm gonna refer to Dave on that. Dave, I read where if there's one annexation request pending, another one can't take place until the first one's finished. Do you know about that?
Uh, there's some case law out of Duluth on that, it depends on the form, but the Court of Appeals, and I think the Supreme Court held that a pending annexation does not block a second annexation. And so, but I, I guess broader point is that issues relating to municipal boundaries, if they come up at all between municipalities, generally don't come up at sword's point like this. They're the subject of advanced discussion, communication, thinking, planning, and so forth. And the question was asked earlier, I'll just say this. Question was asked earlier, has the mining company approached the township about this? And the answer was not, not before, not during, not after the filing of their petition. The last substantive communication that the town board had with the mining company was just under a year ago, when it was presented with a request for two variances to invade a 500-foot setback, the town board's decision at that time was to not approve those variances because they involved, and this may, they, they involve elimination of old growth forests, the encroachment of the mining activity and blasting near houses and other amenities. And so the town board's findings, I'd recommend those to you if you wish to look at them, outlined why, for example, areas needed, in their view, to be protected from mining. I think we can surmise now, the mining company didn't like those rulings, and and so we'll have to address that as, as part of addressing the petition. Is it reasonable to, for a township to say, we'd like to impose some setback limitations on you? And in so doing, does it have to face an annexation once it does that? Is that reasonable that if you don't like that, then you go to the neighbor and neighboring community and ask them to take you on?
Well, I think it's pretty clear that's what we have going on right now. I can't prove it yet, but you know, common law would say, well, why would they want that now, although I did read in February that it was in the league of townships or something, or cities?
Cities.
Did away with townships having to vote on annexation, that was just passed in February, and magically that was about the same kind of whole competition to do an annexation, because we don't have to vote on it anymore. There, it's, you know what, I'm not a doomsayer, yeah, maybe we'll save it, but I know where we are now, I'm looking in the future, you know, I've lived here a long time, you guys all have. And I lived in Cottage Grove, we know what's going on, we're not stupid. But if we sit and wait another year, there's not gonna be anything left at Gray Cloud, it'll be gone. And we already did part of the annexation back in '08, was it '08?
We've had two of them.
About when, when the big field went to St. Paul Park, because already was gonna have Cottage Grove come down and build all the houses and what's their, da la da? I mean, we've been living this battle a long time, and I, I think we're actually getting to the end of it, and it's like, I think we're getting to the point now, we have to make up our minds and realize that we're probably not gonna exist in five years, not the way we know it now. And it's time now to make our best, the best worst decision we can make.
Steve, I, as a board member, I disagree 100%. I moved to this island in 2016, I grew up in Ember Grove, I drove this island religiously. The only reason I'm up here is because I, I moved here and then I just kind of watched what was going on to the land, and I knew the history of it, a lot of the history, and I got involved with my community. And I can tell you with these voices right here, we can do something more, we don't need to be annexed. We, we are a stable community, we're working towards good things, and I'm not into trying to take one less cop or the other, I think we can do it, so.
Hold for the best, but expect the worst, that's all I'm saying.
So let me pass the mic back to that guy in the back, would you, to Barry?
I just wanted, my name's Ted Reese, and I just wanted to, for people that haven't been to as many meetings as I've been to, to let you guys know what's at stake here. It's not just, you know, these parcels here, what they ultimately want to do is, currently this land over here isn't zoned for mining, and we discovered that in the last couple of years as.
It's zoned for my cows.
Right.
Put your mic up there.
But aggregates always intended to mine this, and I don't know, some of you have maybe seen some of their renderings, but what they'd love to do is annex us into Cottage Grove where they have less mining, less strict mining restrictions. Their setbacks are 100 feet from property lines, ours are 500 feet. So what they'd like to do, right now this is not in the commercial excavation district, but if they can convince. do, right now, this is not in the commercial excavation district, but if they can convince Cottage Grove to annex us by force, they'll certainly be open to rezoning this, which is what Aggregates wants. And then they would eliminate this road and put in what they call the ring road. And they put it as close to the back channel as they can. And this would all be one giant pit. That's what they want to do. And right now, the, the reason that this hasn't been as contentious as it has been lately is, for the past fifty years, they've been down in this hole. And everybody's just been going about their business, but now they're running out of material. So they're having to push, push the boundaries. And I'm here, and in the last couple of years, Wholesome's, Aggregates, been filing multiple baroness requests to come closer and closer to our properties, my house, Jeff Moore's property. And the town board's been really good at holding them to the five hundred foot. But now, they're, right after they get rejected and their mining permit has just been approved recently, now they are filing for annexation. So if we're going to make a stand, we have to make it right here. Because if they get this, if they get the first part, parcel, it's going to be an uphill battle. And if we can turn out, I've never seen this many people here, or, you know, usually there's like four or five people here. So if we can, this isn't a lost cause. If we show up with this many people and we shame them.
Respectfully.
Respectfully shame them. But all things being equal, if nobody shows up, they'd love to gobble this up. So I have a petition that's circulating in the back. And make sure that you sign it. We'll get your email address, and we can keep in contact. But, and I'll, and I'll send an email out to you about, you know, step by step, what we can do and the contact information of the decision makers in Cottage Grove. And I encourage everybody to call each one of them. You know, if you're a husband and a wife and family, the husband calls everybody, the wife calls everybody. And on April nineteenth, everybody show up to this meeting, and we'll just fill that room. Bring your kids. And they won't be able to ignore us. I promise.
Make sure, one, real, real quick, just, just, just to reiterate, make sure, you know, you guys are hearing key points, you're questioning merit, you're questioning things. Be positive with your comments. Talk about how much you love the, the island and be respectful and, and give us a good image.
I want to add something else that, I was talking to one of the Cottage Grove councilmen, and he wasn't aware. He said, you know, they have an operation on the lower island, you know, and he said, we hear no complaints about it, nothing. He said, it's silent down there. And he was looking at me like, what's you guys' problem in Gray Cloud? We don't have a problem down in Cottage Grove. And I explained to him, I said, the difference being, I said, that's a sand and gravel pit, relatively quiet, you know, it's, and your closest resident is several thousand feet away. The county's bought a whole bunch of parcels down there. You don't have neighbors down there. Number one, you're not making noise. It's pretty quiet and pretty mundane operation. Up on the other one, it's a different thing. I said, that's a rock quarry. So when you contact these people, make sure you get that differentiation in there. I said, our biggest problem is blasting. They're shaking everybody's house and nobody likes it. And the residents are, you know, they're mining within five hundred feet of residents' property lines. That's your big difference. He didn't understand that. He didn't know that. So again, make that clear to them. So. Yeah, pass the mic to whoever's got the hands up back here.
Did you, she had something, you had something, didn't you?
I was going to ask a question.
Go ahead. Well, you got it.
Hi, everybody. I have a question about whether the EPA has been out to survey this area for endangered species protections. I know this is like a nesting and sort of migration route for the Blandings turtle. There's also this tiny pocketbook freshwater mussel that lives in our lake there. Those are species that require protection under like state statutes and federal statutes, actually. Is there any action on that?
Well, right now, they have not asked to expand their mining operation. They've just asked for annexation. The expanding of the mining operation, we'll feel, will come.
Well, we'll fight, but if the worst happens and they do expand the operations, is there a route there they could possibly put a little kibosh on that, possibly, slow down?
Can you say, what are the species again that are?
The Blandings turtle. It's a terrestrial turtle, but they cross our roadways here and they nest on dry land around the river. And there's actually, I think there's two species of freshwater mussel that live in the lake in the river there that are protected.
I got some freshwater mussel.
It's, it's possible that there would be protections that could be enforced on the use of the land there, if, if they could survey and document the animal's presence on the property.
Thank you.
I have a question. We've had a change in police protection in January, which, A, I was wondering if that has maybe caused some of the, the change that they said has changed the impression that we cannot protect our neighborhood. And the other thing is, is what kind of, what has been happening or going on with changing our township hall? Because I don't know exactly how much time we have left here, but obviously it is short, and obviously they are not going to allow us to stay any longer. And if we leave the township borders to have our meetings somewhere else, then we might as well go to St. Paul Park or Cottage Grove.
So we, so we currently, we use Washington County sheriffs, which we have had no complaints. We were very happy with the service we received from St. Paul Park. We are very happy. We're actually seeing the sheriffs driving. I don't, I've noticed their presence a lot, actually. So we have two, two, what the hell? So, so as a policing aspect, we stand with them. They're doing a great job. Both, both municipalities are handling this very well. We're very pleased. As far as the town hall goes, you know, we've asked about building, not building. We're kind of working with funds on that. But we have a school right down the road that, for intermittent time, if we had to, it's, it's like four seventy-five an hour or something like that.
Four twenty-five?
Four, oh, sorry. I apologize. So we would have an area to assemble close while we, you know, work on, on land to build or, or whatever we come up with. So there's definitely works to keep something happy.
There's a guy in the front there, he was really worried about some things, and he's seen the writing on the wall. You know, they, they said we weren't going to be here anymore. So look over here. You see us, we're still here. There was a bounty on us. There's still a bounty. We're still here. So what I'm telling the folks here at Gray Cloud, understand that you have a lot of power, but you got to stand together. We're still here, and we're here today because of you. But you can't despair. Ted Reese said some good words. You know, where Ted Reese's land is, that was Medicine Bottle's original village. That's a very important place. When he pointed it out on the map, I knew exactly where it was. And so these are all histories that we know. Now, the other thing I would like to point out to the relatives here tonight, does the state have anything to say? Because this is a foreign multinational company that's doing this to locals. So where is the walls administration, the senate, and the legislature on what's going on here? And are they going to stand with the tribes in this township to protect this place? Because clearly, when you look at that island, our grandma's island there, see, I come from John Moore, Hazen Moore's, Moore's Lake, so I'm a relative here. Okay, when you look at that, it really looks like this place has been abused for a mighty long time. How much more do they take? When you go to your grandma's pantry and she gives you some beautiful cookies, do all of a sudden you take them all and sell them? Because that's what's going on here. But you can't despair. And I'll tell you what, you have relatives and tribal government that say, we can find other options. You don't have to worry about being annexed to Cottage Grove or to St. Paul Park. Talk with the community, the tribal nation who has a treaty. And our state leaders who like to talk about supporting folks, and I have a lot of respect for Representative Hanson, but this is the time when I've made a lot of phone calls. Carla Bagel. I called the other day about some prayer chickens. Probably got that message. So, so my thing is, is this is a foreign company. You have to win the public relations battles. Why do you think Indian people are under one percent of the state population, and we win our battles? Because we're feisty. And we know how to use the media. And we don't give up. And we sure the hell ain't going anywhere. And you guys need to take some of that with you home tonight.
So I don't know if anybody's Googled wholesome, Aggregate Industries, Lafarge. They got fined seven hundred and seventy-eight million dollars for dealing with Syria and arms and things like that. And that's just one of them. That's one of the things that they've got fined for. Seven hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. And that's this company.
I just have a question. There's been so many, there's been so many great points that have been brought up. So when I want to write or call somebody, is there going to be a copy so that I can sound intelligent about saying, okay, this is what I've heard, and here's some facts that I'd like to present?
So our, our intent as a town board is to take in all the information from tonight, all the stuff that we've researched, we've done. And we will be hopefully putting out individually or unified a public thing that you guys would have solid information on.
So is that going to be happening quick?
We, we, we know the time we got, and, and, you know, for us to just go act on our own without hearing from you guys, we all have a lot of stuff to start with, but we can compile more stuff in and, and we will be acting very quickly, yes.
I have one last question. The lawyer was talking about the last year when the company wanted to get that variance and they were denied. Is there a, a way that I can get a copy of that?
Email me and I'll send you their application. I'll send you a response.
Okay, cool.
Tell me what you want in there, though, because I'll forget by the time I get home. But I will send it to you. I got it right in here, as long as this thing keeps working. Like I say, an important thing is people show up at that meeting on Cottage Grove. I mean, look at the response we got here. You know, you got to let them, you know, us three can go up there and talk to them and yeah, 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 look at you. But when you get a whole room full of people, your, your politicians, they respond, they listen. You can probably ask Mr. Hanson over there. If you have two or three people call you on something, don't mean much. Probably in your case, if you get fifty, you know, they look at it as, if fifty are looking at it, there's probably another five hundred out there thinking the same thing. Get one or two complaints, just kind of blow them off. But numbers, numbers mean something. They do.
We got, we got fifty-one here tonight. So Rick, just letting you know.
Well, I wanted to say, we have no legal recourse. We have no legal recourse to fight this in court at all. And if we do, are we looking at a lengthy battle price-wise, just like what we had, went through with our last annexation?
Without getting into details, if I can, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and guests and citizens, the, the first step is to put together our objection on behalf of the township and to utilize the force of public sentiment, well stated and calmly asserted and positively brought to Cottage Grove. Beyond that, it's not to say that there's not legal remedies and pathways. I can't get into detail on that right now. But the board's present focus is on putting together the best position it can for purposes of this meeting on the nineteenth. Regrettably, as I mentioned, the town board was not consulted in advance of the bringing of this petition or after.
I'll add, keep in mind when you talk to Cottage Grove, if you go to the meeting or if you email them or you call them or whatever, they did not come looking to annex us. Keep that in mind. You know, they're not the wolf here. The person causing the problem is a Swiss corporation named wholesome now. That is, that is the one that instigated this, not, not your Cottage Grove officials, as far as we know, anyway.
Well, we understand the whole reason for this is because of the job that you guys have been doing to protect our community against big business. And they didn't like it, so they went and cried in Cottage Grove. And that's the whole reason they're, we're having this fight right now.
You guys could clap.
You know, I, I want to thank everybody that showed up here tonight. This is, this is amazing. Are there any other questions?
And just so, like, if you guys reach out to representatives, I know I am and I know other ones are, we're open to car rides with, you know, city council members or discussions. And if, like, you know, like Barry hit the nail on the head, if, you know, the more people that call, you can direct them to us. You can, you know, we, we call, we do stuff too. But, you know, we're, we're open to do that. And it's, it's, I don't think a lot of them know what a pit is, and, you know, there's a lot of stuff at play, so.
Can I get everybody, if you would, sign my petition? And I'll collect, it's circling somewhere.
It's not.
Somewhere.
It's not circling.
Okay. And then I'll get your email address, and I can email you out, kind of like my thoughts and the contact information for all the representatives in Cottage Grove. And maybe you'll use some of the ideas in there. So, and then we can keep connected and stay informed on next steps and how to protect ourselves. So, thank you.
If you guys look at the TV, that's what's been presented over the years in several different forms of what they really want in the future. And like I say, your board is opposed to that. Every resident that lives south of there would have another half mile drive every time they leave, every time they come home, every time they leave, every time they come home, forever. Not a short-term construction detour, not a, you know, short-term thing. It's forever. You know, and other ones, they've shown, have shown houses along the riverside there. That strip of land along the river between their lake they're showing and the river is five hundred feet wide, because that's how far they're required to stay from the river. Well, you know, when you get a setback from the river and you put in a sixty-six foot roadway, it don't leave a lot of room left for land. You know, and your backyard would have about a hundred foot drop down to the lake. So, you know, that's the kind of thing we've been opposed to.
May I say something? I'm Mary Moe. I, we've lived here since nineteen seventy-seven. And on Channel Nine a few days ago, there was a story about this situation. And I'm wondering if we could get more stories, more, yeah, more coverage in the media down here. It would be nice if they were here tonight.
So there's, there's.
Oh, and the Star Tribune too. Oh, I didn't see that. But there, but I know the one on Channel Nine was really very, very nice about us.
That was Dan, our movie star.
You talk for fifteen minutes and they take like three seconds.
Anyway, I think that could be done in other areas too of the broadcast.
So I have a question on this list. It's a service list. Were these all the people that are potentially going to be impacted that are like written next to it?
Those are just, those are abutted properties that were required to be noticed by, by law.
Did they get the notice thirty days by certified mail?
Yes.
The, the.
Did they get the notice thirty days before the nineteenth?
The people on that list were.
The people that are written on that list are, yeah, they receive certified letters.
Just wanted to make sure that everybody was notified at the proper time. Just wanted to make sure that everybody was notified proper time.
The thing to realize too about this, there's so many different aspects. There's so many different aspects to this for us not being annexed. Another issue is the reclamation down here. And what they are supposed to do with the pit? And the plans that are non-existent to do with the pit? And who's gonna be liable for that when they just go up and leave? Cause there's nothing. We, we couldn't find nothing.
Gotta tell Cottage Grove.
That's why I said, tell Cottage Grove. They'll be liable for it.
You know, one thing I might add is when this pit started in the fifties, there probably wasn't hardly any regulations to speak of. You know, they just started digging a hole and everything was fine and happy when they're down in the hole behind the trees. Nobody knew they were there, you know. But as time goes on, they run out of material. They start coming out of the hole. And if they went to create a new mine nowadays, I was looking at the county's thing and, uh, be going in circles here a little bit. Now, before you can start an, an aggregate mine, you have to have a reclamation plan in place before you even put a shovel in the ground. And one thing right now, wholesome is under our mining ordinances and the county's. Ours is rather thin, very many pages to what we kind of depend on the county. Uh, ours is more with setbacks and stuff and our setbacks, like we said before, is stronger. If they get out from under us in the county, then they only have to deal with Cottage Grove. So, you know, that'd be an incentive for them there. But, uh.
As residents too, I mean, if you're reaching out to Cottage Grove, there's a reason we have five hundred foot setbacks with the blasting. I mean, so we could encourage Cottage Grove to consider doing a study on blasting sites and different things, cause they don't have that. So they could definitely look into putting ordinances around blasting type sites into their, into their stuff, just for, you know, into their ordinances. They could add those types of things if they wanted.
Can we get the microphone passed back to the far corner?
I was just gonna comment. My name's Eric Folsom. Uh, this is Linda. We live down on the end back here. Um, I was just gonna say, when I talked to Carla Bigum the other day, she had mentioned that the mine in Denmark Township too is going through some similar issues with their mining ordinances and things. So she's having to deal with that or she's having to look into something with, that, what's going on with that as well. So I also talked to her about, um, I guess the aquifers too. When you de-water mines, when you strip mine, first of all, you're changing the aquifer path, right? So people are gonna have to start thinking about digging deeper, correct, to find new water? That water that comes up into the strip mine, when they leave it, they have to de-water so they can continue to strip mine. So as they take that water and they de-water, they put it out to the Mississippi to be lost forever, correct? It's not only impacting our drinking water, it's impacting everybody that's downstream from us too as well that relies on drinking water from the wells, okay? So there's some points there to be made with those guys when I was talking to Carla about that. She also reiterated that she has no skin in the game, which I understood, but she has a big ear of Bailey and, and Olson and everybody up at Cottage Grove. I mean, they hang out all the time. You see them at parades everywhere. So not just hitting those guys up, if you can get to Carla too, um, she has her earbud for whatever that's worth.
Introduce yourself, old man.
This ain't an annual meeting. You don't get paid.
Yeah, who, who are you?
Yeah, I'm Phil DeBree. This is my better half here. So anyways, um, it's not the board's intention here, I don't think, to drive the company out of Gray Cloud Island. I think you have to recognize that it is a valuable resource for the Twin Cities area. And I think it'd be foolish for us to even, even go that route. But I think with, with not, with being able to maintain it in Gray Cloud, it gives us an opportunity to at least try to keep the restrictions, you know. And like I said, that's our whole reason to go to Cottage Grove, so they can, they'll, they'll be more lenient. And I want to applaud the town board for what you've been doing and keep up the fight.
I want to add one other thing. You guys get an idea how far away the blasting affects people? Take a look at my map up there and drew a line from, uh, the pit where they were blasting last year up to our end. And we had complaints from people up in that area of Cottage Grove right there as to what's going on down here. Their houses were shaking there. Up in St. Paul.
That's St. Paul Park, yeah?
That's Cottage Grove up there, up in St. Paul Park. I don't have the map up there, but the end of Summit, up in St. Paul Park, we had complaints from the end of Summit, they felt it blasting. Just, you know, how many feet are we looking at there? Eight thousand feet. So you get an idea how far away that blasting affects people. Uh, my granddaughter's at our house one day and she's two years old and they blasted and she says, Grandma, is that an earth shake? You know, so, you know, just get an idea. You know, I want people, a lot of you people out here around here know how bad, you know, the shaking and vibrating that goes on. And that's basically the biggest issue with people. I want people, you know, like our legislator, maybe Carla Bigum looks at that and other people that see, you know, how, how much it does affect people. Cause unless you're down here, you don't really realize it.
So speaking of, the, the one thing we never covered is property taxes.
Yeah.
So, we've ran numbers. We've done that kind of stuff. And, and the average median house around Gray Cloud, if we went to Cottage Grove, you're gonna probably see fourteen hundred to two thousand dollar increase per year on your taxes with the same amenities that we already have, unless we, you know, hey, you gotta pave pioneer and whatever push, but it, it has great impact. We pride ourselves as a township to try and keep taxes manageable. We, we just want to have an efficient township, do our thing and, and preserve the land here, so. That is something that'll hit everybody.
I can talk on that. I want to, the other woman asked a question for it too. When do we have to be out of here? The middle of twenty-four, middle of twenty twenty-four. Somewhere around there. And in fact, along with that, our clerk just found out, she talked to the elections people at Washington County. Where would we vote? Pine Hill School? And then I checked with the school district and we can rent any room we want in the school for four dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. Well, the outhouse out back costs us about a hundred and ten bucks a month, so. You know, in, in some cases, it wouldn't be bad. I mean, nobody likes coming in this place in the winter. You know, you freeze your butt off. You can't go to the toilet. You don't have running water.
Not to mention bugs.
Well, they live here. Back to the property taxes. I use my house as an example. This is actual numbers. My value, taxable valuation of my house, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred dollars. At Cottage Grove's rate, I would pay an additional two thousand, seventy-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. I'll run that by you again. Five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar house should go up two thousand dollars. Now granted, our taxes are low. What, and let me add something else in there. Cottage Grove assesses for road repairs. We don't. Okay? Uh, now, just so you know, our taxes are not gonna stay the same as yours. We's, uh, we need to increase some sum to get some roads fixed around here.
What is the sum?
Well, we're working on that. But they're not gonna stay the same. We can't continue on the budget we have, just so you're aware of that. But anyway, that's what you're looking at. Any other questions?
Um, I got a comment about the water. Um, I just liberated here, so I was the closest to the blasting for a long time here in the last couple of years. They put up the god awful berm up here, which is way too close to the road. They just did it. Um, my, when they started blasting over here, my well went down twenty-one feet. Overnight, it went down. I paid for a new pump in that. They wanted to pay for the pump, fifteen hundred dollars, but they also wanted me to sign my life away. So I would have no other recourse if something happened again. Yeah, so that's that. And I, uh, with the, the blasting down here, um, I've got cracks in my walls from the blasting. Uh, yeah, we all do. Um, so, you know, it, it's, it's a lot more involved than the Nelson plant in San Miguel. And they don't realize that up there.
Thanks, Lynn. So I think we're kinda, you know, I think we've all had a chance to kind of hear each other. We have a lot of great information, um, you know, throw out, there's a lot of people. Ted said stuff about emailing and stuff, but there's things, citizen groups, you know, you guys, you guys can come together, get, get contacts, get different things. The town hall can be opened at any time of day. Um, if you want to meet for putting things together, for flyers, for calling, any of that stuff. You know, you guys can feel free to reach out to each other and, and form groups or pods. I know I've had a good group of people that I've met with a few times and it's, it's been great and it's, it's good to do that. You know, it's, it's great to see. This is what a township's about. You don't get this in a city. So I, finishing out for me, I mean, I really appreciate you guys coming. Um, look forward to it.
I got one question for Rick. What was the thing on the legislative auditor and aggregate stuff in the state or whatever was, what's that about?
So I, I serve on the legislative audit commission. And the, the auditor is not the state auditor. The legislative auditor reviews whether things are working, like whether programs are working, whether laws are working. And so I chair that. There's a hundred and thirty-two topics were suggested. Uh, I put that in as one of the sixteen. We just narrowed that down to ten.
Yeah.
It's good to be chair.
Yep.
But what we want to do is look at overall the issue of aggregate mining and things like this. Um, and, you know, we need your testimony. Uh, it would be valuable to have testimony in that. And it's a review on making recommendations on changes to laws. That takes a while. You know, I think there are things that we can do, things that I can do, uh, in working at the Capitol in the short term. But in the long term, this issue not, is not just here. Uh, there are something like five hundred and thirty aggregate mines. And as development in the state of Minnesota. And these issues are gonna occur and they're often near cities or in townships that are near cities. And so this issue is gonna continue. So I wanted that picked so that we wouldn't have to replicate this five hundred times, that we can try to adjust the laws to make sure we can protect, uh, communities as well as the resource. And so, uh, it's probably very likely that it'll get picked, but that will take time. And then what happens is there's a scoping process where input comes in from the public. And the legislative auditor, we're unique in that, that we have this non-partisan. There's equal number of Republicans and Democrats, equal number of senators and House members. And when there's a report that comes from that, it's usually taken as a gold standard because they have subpoena power. They can do all, all kinds of things to try to get the best information possible to make, to go back to legislators. And usually that's something that legislators will say, hey, we need to do this. That doesn't help in the next month. But it is something overall, so that this doesn't have to be replicated in town halls all across the state. Because the demand for aggregate, as buildings go and roads go, the demand for aggregate is hot. And you have these very large companies that are doing it. We went through this with sand, with silica sand about ten years ago, when the market was really hot for silica sand. And usually the aggregate laws are the same as sand. And we put in regulations on silica sand to say, well, you can't start a mine within a mile of the trout stream. You know, things like that. So there's, based on the auditor, we want your input and public input is very. The legislative auditor works for all of us. And so that's what we're trying to do. That's something I've been doing the last few weeks, is to try to get that as something we can look at. But there's, for the immediacy, I think there's other things that we can do. And that's why I asked some of the questions with DNR. I think there's some things we can do with the tribe as well, uh, in working with the executive branch itself.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, what are you, you're chair of the what? Natural Resources and Environment Committee?
Environment Committee.
Yeah. It helps, helps to have a legislature that's been there, legislator's been there a while. They get better committee assignments, right?
It helps serve you more.
Yeah, there you go.
We would, I would for sure love to have an opportunity to testify in that committee or anything if you needed input. I'd gladly take a seat at that table.
Hey, Dan. That open piece of property that was potentially looking to jump across and start doing all that work on it, nice property.
East of seventy-five?
Right there. Is that considered a new mine or contiguous mine? Would that be considered a new mine because it's untouched?
There, there is a EAW currently going on on that property to find out contents and different things. Um, but yeah, that.
As of now, that parcel has not been zoned for mining.
What is it zoned on?
Residential.
Residential. I put the well readings up there. People are talking about well readings. You look down there in the bottom left, that's when we first started getting well readings. And you can see what they were on, uh, March twenty-first of twenty-three. The town hall well, it's right outside the, the door here. You can see it started out around ninety-seven feet. We measured from the top of the well casing down to the water. And now it's down to about a hundred and thirteen feet, so. You can do the math, figure out how far the water's gone down. The rest of the wells around town have not gone down that far. Not as, this is the, obviously it's closest to the pit.
Well, I think it's a good time to, uh, we could go on for hours talking about it. So I think it's a good time. We got a lot of feedback. I'd really encourage you guys to reach, reach out to your representatives at Cottage Grove and really appreciate you guys coming.
Yeah, and keep in mind, it wasn't Cottage Grove that did this.
Yeah.
Swiss company.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All in favor?